Tonight's study session is really a follow-up. This is part of the next steps that we talked about at the end of the retreat. And this is an effort to just keep making progress towards, as the year goes on. And so tonight is really kind of an organizational discussion. And so to handle, I'm going to turn this over to Kyle to kick this off and keep us on point.
Good evening. I don't know. Okay, thanks. Nice to see all of you again. As Chris said, this is just kind of a follow-up on our last meeting to talk about a few things around the process. The agenda, start with a timeline, talk through the key points and the frequently asked questions, discuss the public outreach plan that's proposed with specific emphasis on some community groups, talk a little bit about the formation of the campaign committee, and then next steps. So to start with, then, the timeline, what you'll see here, this is the kind of the full scope of the education period, and again, what some of those strategies and tactics were that we were outlining. The black line is where we are today in that process. You can see, then, going through April, May, June, and July, and then if the issues referred to the ballot at the end of July, then the campaign period kicks in August 1st and goes through Election Day, which is actually early November, even though I've got the whole month up there. So the two items that have been developed so far are the key messages and the frequently asked questions, and I guess the key points. And the next few slides will go through the key points. I believe you have them in your packet. And then after that, the frequently asked questions. So here, the city is considering a ballot issue that would ask voters to update the language in the city code.
Kyle, I'm sorry. So just, we might want to just talk a bit about what the key points are and how we might use them, and the benefit of having the city that's provided with key points, et cetera.
Okay. So these key points really are for you, as you're out in the community talking about the issue. Again, as we provide education materials to the residents as well, the messages that you see here and on the next few slides will be kind of the primary ones that we have out there. But we just, this way, it just, so that everybody is kind of on the same page. And again, these came out of our previous discussions around the issue. So again, on this one, are you okay if I read through them? Okay, okay. The city is considering a ballot issue that would ask voters to update the language in the city code as it relates to sales tax collection on sales of items delivered into the village by businesses that are not physically located in the village, including sales by online vendors. The city code contains outdated wording that can be construed to limit the city's ability to collect sales tax on purchases from vendors that do not have a "place of business" in quote in the village, including vendors that make retail sales via the Internet. So that's kind of the introductory broad overview statement as far as the key points. Then we kind of drill down into some of the other aspects of it. If the city stops receiving sales tax remittances from remote vendors delivered into the city, it'll cost the city a minimum of $1.2 million per year in revenue, or about 13% of our actual collected revenue. The city is required to have a balanced budget each year, so without this revenue, levels of service from the city will need to be reduced. This could affect police, roads, and transportation, including staffing levels and road maintenance. I'll go through all of these, and then we can talk about them. If the city no longer receives these sales tax remittances, it will not only reduce revenue, it may increase expenses. Some remote vendors will continue to send us the sales tax revenue, so we may need to hire additional staff to manage the process of returning that money to the residents who paid it. We need to fix it today to avoid a problem in the future. Specifically, we could start seeing impacts to staffing and services as early as 2023. This issue is also about fairness. We need to treat remote vendors like we treat the businesses in Cherry Hills Village, consistent with marketplace realities and current law. If the retailers in Cherry Hills Village have to collect sales tax but remote vendors do not, then that puts the businesses with physical locations in our city at a competitive disadvantage. Both the state of Colorado and virtually all of the home rural municipalities in our state have made similar updates to allow for the collection of sales tax on remote sales to their residents, including Internet purchases. So those are kind of the key, again, the kind of the broad overview statement here, and then the five key points under that. So in going through those, were there any of them, did anybody have any questions about any of the wording on them, or Al?
Yeah, no, I think you did a very good job with that. My question is, and somebody raised this with me the other day, let's say they go to, somebody like Earl goes and buys a Rolex watch in Denver and has it delivered in Cherry Hills. Would we then be collecting the sales tax on that here, under this scenario, or is it, how's that work then?
Yeah. Well, the point is, the point of delivery would be before the sale, so then it would be delivered into the city, and we would collect it now.
So that would be covered by this then also, right?
Yes. Are they buying it and then having it shipped, or they buy it in Denver?
No, no, they buy it in Denver, have it shipped here.
Yes. If it's being shipped into the city, then the city would collect it. If they buy it in Denver and pick it up in Denver, then it's Denver sales tax. Correct.
So we would be covered then for something like that?
Yes.
Somebody raised that question, I appreciate it.
Any other questions about any of these?
I didn't really have a question, but I did just want to say, particularly on this slide, I really appreciate the wording in the second sentence that says, "The city code contains outdated wording that can be construed to limit." I really appreciate that because it is a little murky. And I think that that helps reduce the possibility that some of outrage over, or a huge flare up over a belief that, you know, we've been doing something that we've been legally prohibited from doing. I think to say that you could interpret it that way is the right way, it's the accurate way, the right way, and the way to communicate it that helps move things forward, I think. So I really appreciate that wording, and I hope that in whatever iteration may occur through this process, that that in particular stays.
Great.
And then, will that then be continued on whenever we do the actual wording for the ballot issue? I think that's critical then, too, because you raise a very valid point on that.
I don't know how much gets put into the actual ballot wording, but yeah, I think it's very important to say, one could read it that way. One could also read it in other ways, but.
Thank you. Randy?
In the first.
I get so excited, you know?
Forget to press the button. We mentioned Internet twice in this, and I wonder, there's probably purpose to that, but, you know, we mentioned it in like the third, fourth line, and the third line here. Salesman, it's not physically. Yeah, online vendors and Internet is in the last, is the last word. And I feel like it sort of draws a lot of attention to online. Is that what we want to do, or?
I think that's a big part of it, just because Internet sales have become such a huge part of all the retail economy, just kind of reinforcing the idea that this is remote sellers, which also includes the Internet retailers. So it's not just, again, the example of the watch, not just moving around in other communities in the metro area, but also the Internet sales.
Okay. And then the other point I was, that was crossing my mind is, is in the next, on the next page, I believe it is, we talk about having to, no, I think it's the following page, where we talk about the return and the return of the tax money.
Oh, that is, I think, the second one there.
Okay. That it would, you know, and I feel like there are maybe a couple of dots to be connected, because we've said, well, you could suffer in services if we no longer get the 1.2 million. Now here's sort of the double whammy. If we have to spend a lot of administrative resources, devote a lot of administrative resources to returning the tax, you're going to further suffer on the core, you know, services that the city provides. So just a thought, and I don't know if that comes out quite as clearly as, you know, we have to devote resources to it, which will further diminish.
So maybe clear, maybe reword some of that second bullet to where that's a little clearer?
Yeah. I think, I think it, because it is kind of a compounding sort of a problem, if we get into, you know, all of a sudden this staff is in the administration business and having to really devote a lot of time and resource, already pressed with the 1.2 million gone and so on.
Randy, I think you raised a good point there, as Katie did also. Does that create a potential liability for us, the fact that we have not been returning this money as it's been collected? Do we even need to disclose that? I mean, is that an important issue here, disclose the additional expenses? Or should we leave that out completely?
Yeah, I think that's part of the market.
But raising that point, raising that point may be putting a spotlight.
I was really thinking about it, like, you know, if you have Amazon that insists on sending us the checks, and then we have residents who decide they'd like to get a rebate for taxes that they don't believe they owe, then we've got to go through a whole process of collecting the receipts to find, you know, did you really pay the tax, validating it, and then writing checks for, you know, 72 cents and stuff like that.
Our city attorney wants to say something.
Yeah, I just want to, to Councilor Wheel's point, that process has been in place, it's been available to citizens, it's been in the code for a very long time. I think maybe some of the thinking on this here is, well, we're bringing this issue to the fore, it may highlight this.
Yeah, I'd be, the magnitude of the activity, I think, is the question, and will that start to attract resources and divert them from other things when a budget's tight?
The question is, do you want to put a spotlight on that here? Do we need to? Do we even need this clause added to that broad point?
Maybe I can add something to that quickly. Look, I think, I think the issue is very clearly stated. The impact is clearly stated, at least for me, when you say 1.2 million and 13%, that's pretty impactful. The way I like to see this is that, so, those are perfect, in my opinion. Then you've got to ask, right? What is it that we're asking from the voters? And then always like after ask, come back to the impact, which, by the way, we're asking this, and if you don't, here's the impact. So the impact, to me, is that, again, the issue, the impact, ask, impact. So that, to me, is that you basically brought impact twice, and hopefully people won't miss it. So I like what I, what I see here, I just see a little bit of a rearrangement. That's all from my end.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Gallagher.
You know, I think of the letters that were written, I think of specifically, and so many of them tended to focus on just the fact that we shouldn't be doing this. And it really comes out in the FAQ, in number three of the frequently asked questions, you know, and we've got to address that, because there's going to be certain citizens who are going to just pound on that, that you shouldn't be doing that in the first place, so. But it's well addressed in that third point.
Collecting the tax?
Their, their point is, we shouldn't be doing, we shouldn't be collecting this tax. And those letters that came through express that sentiment. And then it's addressed in the FAQ, FAQ number three.
I also, I guess what I would suggest, Randy, to your point, is, the question's always been out there for me as to what our ultimate responsibility would be, whether we actually would have the responsibility of returning every dime to the taxpayers, or whether we would have the responsibility for returning the money to the company who remitted it. And so I think that if you just left this last sentence at, additional staff to manage the process of returning that money, period, that, that reads to me, you know, as a person who hates paying taxes myself, I don't immediately read that, I read this sentence and think, yeah, I want my money back. If I, if you lead off returning the money to the residents who paid it, because really, the reality is, there's, there's really no guarantee that those residents are ever going to get that money back. If we sent the money back to Amazon, I have zero confidence that Amazon would turn around and refund it to the residents. And I think that that is a fine point, but I think it makes a difference in the way people will perceive who's getting to keep the money. Right? If they think they're going to get it back for sure, then they may very well say, yeah, I want it back. But they may not.
If I may, to Katie's point, too, along with that is, the vendors can retain a vendor fee, it's 2.1%, up to $500. So the city's not even collecting the entire amount that the vendor has collected for sales tax, because they're keeping a portion of that. So if we're refunding this back to the resident, then either A, we have to deduct a portion of that vendor fee, or we give up the vendor fee, knowing that the vendor collected it, and then we're out further revenue, because now we have to pay for the vendor fee. So I agree with that.
I would just leave it as returning the money, you know, period.
I would, my two cents, I think I follow Al's point, I might delete that whole thing. I think it might, the whole paragraph, I think it might exaggerate really the difficulties, highlights an issue that we don't need to highlight. I think, I think we could actually, I don't, I'm just not persuaded that it's going to cost us a lot of money to do this. If we send out letters to these vendors absolutely saying, stop sending this money, it's going to happen, right? We aren't going to have, we aren't going to have higher staff to do anything. I just don't think it's, it's a balanced, fair, I'd be inclined to just delete the whole paragraph and delete that as an argument.
I second, I think the critical thing is the lost revenue, not the additional expenses. So I leave the first sentence there and delete, like you said, the second.
So I, let me, if I could just chime in for a second. So I just want to, so these key points are not going to be in a document. They may be the basis for various pieces of documents that get produced later on, but this is not a key points document that we're going to be sending out. It's important to work on the wording, but I would almost encourage you to think of, instead of saying, well, let's take that paragraph out, that's a point that you guys aren't going to make when you're presenting, or when you're talking with voters, right? It's really more a matter of what our messaging really needs to be. Now, again, I don't want to understate how, if this is sort of the backbone of the education, we do, it very well may be used, we may pull out pieces of this and use it in different things, so we do want to make sure it, but I guess I would encourage counsel to think of this as your playbook, in a way. The second thing is, I think the other thing that we thought about that I would encourage you to evaluate is, does this, does this approach, does this messaging kind of achieve the balance that we talked about at the retreat? So if you recall at the retreat, we had this conversation of, okay, well, it's, this isn't necessarily, you know, the city isn't, you know, going up in flames as we speak, but at the same time, we need to take action now. And I very specifically remember Counselor Wheel speaking at the retreat about the idea of being good stewards and financial or fiduciary advocates on behalf of taxpayers, and so it's the responsible thing to do, to act now. So, you know, something you might think about is, does the tone of this altogether, does it strike the right balance between, you know, we need to, it's important, but it's not necessarily, you know, the crisis that we've got to fix today, but it's still important, and it's responsible. Does this, do these points do a good job of striking that balance that was talked about at the retreat?
I think so, and I think there was another one where I particularly liked the wording that basically said, we need to act now to prevent a problem in the future. I really liked that, because it, I think that is accurate, that, you know, things are not, the sky is not falling right now, but.
But the future may be next year.
Losing 13% of our revenue would be a big blow. So I think that definitely strikes the right balance between not, you know, Chicken Little, but, you know, we're trying to be responsible about how we work with this.
I second that, actually. I think, I think you've done a good job walking a fine line on this. I mean, I do think that anytime we come to the voters, we have to say, you know, why are we, what's the problem? Why are we doing this? Where's the money going? And what'll happen if we don't do this? What'll happen if this fails?
Yeah.
I think that's in here, but I think it's, I think it's done well. I mean, it's not done in an alarmist way, and that may be the first shot. I mean, if it doesn't pass, then there may be a different wording the next time we go back to the voters.
But I, when we were talking about this one idea that we had was, we do have a very educated voting population, and I, you know, I don't think that we have to, you know, spin it in some ways. If we just put the facts on the table, 13% of our overall budget, I think a lot of our voters are going to understand what that means without us having to be alarmist. So I think that, personally, I think it strikes a good balance, but I guess I want counsel to be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think the main thing for me is to make sure there's nothing in here, no words that are not accurate.
Right.
Okay. That's the biggest thing, because that's the easiest thing for someone to glom onto. That's what, a little bit, my hesitance about saying it's going to cost us a lot of money to, expenses in the future, because I just don't know that that's, you know, it makes speculation, I don't, it may not work out that way. So why, why put it in there? But I think that's the most important thing, that we all need to be very careful going through this word by word, making sure there's nothing in here that's not accurate and dependable.
Got it this time. There's a question crossing my mind, you know, nowhere in here do we actually say, on an Internet sale, your sales tax will be 7.7 whatever, you know, and I wonder if, speaking in generalities, you know, do we need that in our back pocket, so that if somebody says, well, you know, a lot of words here, but what are you really saying? And I, you know, if they said that to me, I think I would, I would have tend to say is, well, anything you order on the Internet will be subject to the normal sales tax rate, and that runs about, you know, whatever.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, it's a question that's troubling me a little bit.
Make sure that number's in there, so people understand.
And they need to understand that they are required to pay Colorado sales tax.
Yeah.
Regardless. Regardless, and that they are paying it, and that, because I, I think you're, that made me, sparked a memory that, you know, a lot of people think they don't pay any sales tax.
Right. They're already paying.
And you are required, as it is, to pay Colorado sales tax, and so the incremental difference would be 3.5 percent.
Do, do we need to make an affirmative statement that our sales tax rate will not increase? It's staying the same, we're not doing anything about that.
I believe the ballot language will start with.
We'll have to say that.
Taxes will not be increased, right?
Oh, no. That's not, it's going to, it's going to have to say that it will be increased, because, because you were taxing a whole new category of vendors, so taxes will be increased.
We, we will have an executive session shortly, we will have an executive session shortly to, to talk about ballot language issues, so I would encourage us to hold off on this one.
It is a legal question.
Get some legal advice.
The sales tax rate is not.
The rate, the rate will not change.
And I think that affirmative statement could be made regardless of what's in the ballot.
Yeah.
And I think that's some, that's some.
So just to, just to clarify that, though, the, that is a frequently asked question, number four.
Yeah.
And to the point of, you know, well, what is the sales tax rate? I actually think that's a great point, and we should add that.
Add that to four.
To the, to the number four question.
Our system's 3.5, that won't change.
Correct.
The state has 3.5, that won't change.
But you'll pay that regardless.
Regardless.
So I think, I think number four, we can, we can add some details to that one.
Okay. Okay. That works. Anything else on the key points? Do we want to go on to the frequently asked questions?
Yes.
Okay. So, again, there's eight questions. The first one, what is the issue Cherry Hills Village is considering putting on the ballot? Again, starting with kind of the broad overview here, the city, city is considering a ballot issue that would ask voters to update the language in the city code as it relates to the sales tax collection on sales of items delivered into the village by businesses that are not physically located in the village, including sales by online vendors, very similar to the key point. The city code contains outdated wording that can be construed to limit the city's ability to collect sales tax on purchases from vendors that do not have a place of business in the village, including vendors that make retail sales via the internet. Many internet companies such as Amazon are currently collecting sales tax from Cherry Hills Village residents and remitting it to the city each month. The city would like to update the language in the city code to modernize its collection of sales tax to include items delivered into the city by businesses that are not physically located into the city. So basically, the same wording as the first key point. The second one.
Sorry, can I just interject there? To Russell, to your point, I, I do agree about being very careful to not say anything that is, is not completely true, right? And the, calling out Amazon particularly, specifically is tricky, because as I have said at previous meetings, they are charging me city sales tax on some purchases and not on others. And I fear that some residents will look at that, will look at their Amazon purchase and say, that's not true, I wasn't charged Cherry Hills. So I don't know how to.
We can just, I think if we just stroke, strike out those words.
Yeah.
That.
I mean, I think it's important to know that some people are paying city tax, because I am paying it on some of the Amazon purchases, just not all of them.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, I, it just needs to be more.
You bet.
Some, and.
Clean that up.
You know, I, I think.
I mean, they are.
They are.
Sometimes they're not, though. I don't know a lot of companies.
I think that, the word many might address that rather than all.
Okay.
Or maybe even taking such as Amazon out.
That's what.
And many internet companies.
I would, I would do that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I'm, I'm also wondering if we should, I, I don't have word for word memory on what you, what you had just said, but not calling it sales tax, but calling it municipal sales tax, or something that starts to differentiate between what Cherry Hills charges and what the state charges, which is really not in play.
City sales tax?
You know, in the, in the, as you, you go through the answers to the questions and so on, I think, yeah.
I think that's a good point. I can definitely change that. The second question is again, similar to the second key point from before, where we talk about the 1.2 million per year in revenue, or about 13 percent of the actual collected And the last paragraph there, we may adjust based on our discussion about the key points. Item number, or question number three, does this mean, and again, I probably should reiterate, a lot of these questions, one, they came out of our working session, but also the focus groups that we did with residents, these are some of the questions they asked around this issue. Does this mean we should not be paying sales tax on internet purchases now? Not necessarily. As mentioned above, the current language is outdated due to changes in how business is done and changes in the law. In 2018, the Supreme Court ruled in Wayfair versus South Dakota, that a business may be required to collect local sales tax on retail transactions if that business does not have a physical presence in the local jurisdiction if certain minimal requirements are met. Both the state of Colorado and virtually all the home rural municipalities in our state have made similar updates to allow for the collection of sales tax on remote sales to their residents, including internet purchases. We simply want to revise the language in our city code to modernize the city's ability to collect sales tax from remote vendors consistent with marketplace realities and current law.
I, I like that except for the first two words. I would delete the first two words.
Okay.
Just go right into it, take out not necessarily, and just says, and just say, as mentioned above.
Okay.
And then I, and, and instead of saying, we simply want to revise the language, delete simply, just we want to revise the language, oh, that's simple, I would just.
Okay.
We want to revise the language. So we, so we bring remote sellers in conformance with our local sellers. That's, the fairness thing seems to me to be the biggest.
Okay.
Biggest point that we have.
Good, we'll make those changes. We've already talked about question four, we'll add the additional information about the city sales tax rate, the 3.5 percent. Question five, the internet has been around for a long time, and the city has been receiving internet sales tax revenue for several years. Why is this issue coming up now? Since 2015, the city has provided information to citizens about this issue, and provided a letter they can show remote vendors to let them know not to collect sales tax on their transaction. We also informed citizens about how they can receive refunds for sales tax collected on internet purchases, and we have contacted remote vendors, such as Amazon, about our city code. So we can take out the part about signaling out Amazon there too, pretty easily.
No, we did, we contacted them, I think it's important to say that.
Oh, okay, okay. City council and city staff have been discussing this issue recently and felt that it was time to update the city code to provide clarification that complies with current law.
My suggestion would be here is to lead off with SUTs, because that's really why this is coming up, too. I think, I think we can say that as absolute honesty, that the reason this is coming up now is because the state is adopting the sales, uniform sales tax system, that if we want to be a part of it, we have to revise our code. Do you think, I mean, I, isn't that, isn't that a direct answer to the question of why is it now? It's because if we want to be part of this, we've got to, we've got to change our code.
We could add that, the only reason I didn't include it here was because in the focus groups, people didn't feel like that was a relevant.
Relevant issue.
Argument, yeah. That's, that was the only reason it didn't make it.
We could, I, I, you know, it.
Maybe it's too much in the weeds.
I, I just don't know how much it, if that adds a whole new cog, or if we're just adding teeth to an existing cog, right? If we had too many moving pieces, it could.
Could be, okay.
I mean, that, to me, has been sort of the art and the science here, is saying truthful, accurate, and legally sound things without getting to the point where it's not.
The answer here really doesn't, the answer really doesn't answer the question of why now, though, but that's okay.
I mean, I, I think, you know, it's fair to say, there has been some state adjustments in reaction to the Supreme Court decision.
Maybe that's all complies with current laws enough to say that's SUTs.
That's where I've been, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Number six, why is this issue going on the ballot? It sounds more like a legal issue. Even though this would not increase the city's sales tax rate, the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights, Tabor, which is part of the Colorado State Constitution, requires voter approval for tax-related revenue increases.
Well, it isn't an increase, though, is it?
Well, yeah, so I think, maybe we should say.
Maybe there's a different way to say that.
Yeah, I think maybe we should say, you know, because sales tax would now be applied to new vendors.
It's a tax policy change resulting in a net revenue gain.
It actually, it actually, this is actually accurate, because it's, what's really important to the Supreme Court is, does it increase revenue? You can make a lot of changes to taxes, but if it doesn't increase revenue, they say it's not a Tabor issue. But when you're increasing revenue by the proportion that this does to us, that, that triggers Tabor, so.
So should we.
We can play with the language, but I'm just saying that this is, this is as written as accurate.
I agree that it's accurate. Is there a way to take the words "tax-related" out of it, since it really is a revenue issue, not a tax issue?
I think that's something we can discuss.
Well, it's a tax, it's a tax issue. It's applying the tax to a broader pool, to Counsel Brown's point.
I guess, I guess what I want to make clear is that we're not imposing, we're not imposing a completely new tax.
Right.
We're imposing an existing tax on people who previously have not been required to pay it.
Yes.
And we're not increasing the amount or the rate of the tax itself, we're just at, we're, we're just making more people now responsible for paying it. And so it is a tax increase, it does trigger Tabor, I, I do believe that, but I know that tax increase just creates a lightning bolt in a lot of people, and I think that we need to be very clear about, you know, that we're, that it's a tax being applied to a new set of vendors.
I think you could delete the words "tax-related" and just say.
I, I agree, I agree, because really, it's a revenue, that, Tabor requires, if there's a revenue.
It is true.
So if you could delete the words "tax-related," I think that gets Katie's concern about taxes, because you're right, there is a knee-jerk reaction when they hear tax.
I mean, it's a tax policy.
Not, not from my side.
You could also say the tax policy change, which is true.
Yeah, that's technically where we.
But a tax policy change without a revenue, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't trigger Tabor.
It's a tax policy that results in a net revenue gain, right? So you could just use those words if you.
I just wanted, anything that sounds like a new tax, or an increase in the tax itself, that's what I want it, because that is not really accurate. What's accurate is, and so it's just something that.
That's a good point.
Tax policy change.
Doesn't say that.
Tax policy change that increases revenue?
Sure.
Simple, straightforward.
Yep, I think that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Randy, were you, did you have?
Well, one of the things that keeps crossing my mind, what, what, one of the things that made an impression on me was, you know, we were like one of two municipalities in the country that had language like this, we were the only one in the state, and, and so on. I can't tell you that I know that to be a precise fact, but those were things that people said along the way, and to, you know, to really put some focus on just how much of an anomaly this language is, and it gets back to Russell's point about, you know, there, there are big companies with systems in place, there are states with systems in place, and we are like really swimming against the current. You know, it, I mean, it kind of goes to the, it goes to the argument about updating, but at the same time, it's like, I, I think there's, I found more contrast when it was like, we're the only ones in Colorado and one of two in the country.
How did that work in the focus groups? Did they respond to that? Do you recall how they, this being, us being such an outlier, or did that really, I thought you, you said it didn't really make a whole lot of difference.
Yeah, I, I know we talked about it, I don't recall a significant surprise at that issue or not. Part of it is, too, is I was a little worried that it was anecdotal and not factual, so, and, so that's kind of why I haven't, I, I didn't address it, but.
But you know, if we, if we, if we thought about it from a Colorado perspective, I would guess that the state folks know, as a result of the uniform sales tax, they, they would know everybody else complies.
Yeah, well, the, the issue is more complicated. Some, some municipalities don't have any sales tax at all, so, you know, you can't, so you can't make that kind of, that kind of comparison kind of falls flat, because there's some out there who just rely on property tax, or they, they have never adopted a sales tax, or it's very low or something, so.
Forget that.
That doesn't, that makes us not quite so much of an ally.
In the metro area, it's true.
The other thing I've learned, too, over working on tax issues over the years, is a community doesn't always, if they're an outlier on a tax issue, that's not always.
A bad thing.
They're like, so.
Great.
Great.
That's why I love it.
I'd say the, the one thing, as long as we're talking about anecdotes, so when I talk to people about this, the one thing they say is, interesting, they'll say things like, I don't want my sales tax money going to Inglewood. It's okay if it goes to Cherry Hills, that's, I kind of understand that, but they don't like that, but I don't know that there's any way to play that in here.
We, we heard that comment in the focus groups.
A lot. They're, they're happy to pay sales tax if it goes to us.
Yeah.
They don't like spending sales tax, unnecessarily that goes to Inglewood or Sheridan, so.
Yeah.
Just a background.
When I look at different internet purchases, I see different sales tax rates. Why is that? This points to the current confusion that exists amongst remote vendors conducting business in the city.
And I would add, you know, the proposed change would eliminate that confusion.
Okay, great.
Should have led you at that issue.
Yeah.
The, the real issue is that Amazon.
I know, Chris is like, whoa, let's not make any promises.
I'm going to, I'm going to look at Director Sager for a little backup here, but I, I think we even get some inconsistency all, I mean, I don't know, why don't you chime in on this?
Well, we initially had that as part of the answer, and then we removed it because we weren't 100 percent sure that, that it would be clarified, because we do have vendors that will still remit, not just through the SUT system, they'll remit on their own, and it could be confusing for them. If it's a mom and pop shop, they might be still remitting the sales tax to Inglewood instead of Cherry Hills Village, because they don't, they don't know. So we, we didn't want to put that in there and, and promise that it would clarify it when we're not 100 percent sure.
Well, then maybe, then maybe we just need to say, you know, that's what we're trying to address.
This addresses that problem.
That's what, you know, I mean, we can't make promises that it'll 100 percent fix it, but that's why we're trying to do this.
So I think maybe there's one more affirmative step after what we have, where we can talk about us trying to address it, but hedging a little bit from, you know, overpromising.
Well, but, but wouldn't it be the situation where if somebody pointed that out to us, we would go back and try and straighten out that inconsistency? I mean, you know, there's, today, I think the inconsistency is because there's ambiguity in everything from our language to the systems and all.
I guess I don't know if I want to promise that either. So for example, Amazon is sometimes charging and sometimes not, can I promise that that's going to be uniform after we do this? No. And frankly, I don't want to promise that we're going to go back and suddenly try and reconcile that, because we don't have the resources.
If, if we had some material amount of money that wasn't being charged, that was due to us, wouldn't we want to go back and?
Well, there's a cost benefit analysis there that we would probably want to undertake before we went down that road.
So why don't we say something along the lines, yeah, why don't we say something along the lines of, making this change would create consistency about what's owed to us, right? Not, not necessarily our ability to collect it, or to, but it will create consistency in what is, in what sales tax is owed.
Help, help, help to move towards consistency.
Yeah. Okay, good. Question eight, the city has been receiving revenue from remote vendors already, what has the money been used for? We currently utilize the money we are receiving from remote vendors for government administration and operations, such as personnel, capital projects, road maintenance, and public safety. And that was, again, one of the questions that came up in the focus.
I think that has to be in there, you have to know what people are paying for, they want to know whether it's going to go to capital projects or police, and, and I think pointing out that police is.
Do you want to add the word police instead of public safety? Police is critical, I think.
Yeah, and I might put it first.
So change "public safety" to "police"? Okay, absolutely.
Make it the first.
Yeah, "public safety" means all kinds of things.
It means, it means you're, you're, yeah.
Vaccine clinics and-
Okay.
Your elementary school, "stop lady walker," you know, "cross walker."
Stop lady walker? That's the legal term.
Stop walker. Stop, what, stop walker, stop walker.
Okay, good, that's the frequently asked questions.
Oh, one thing I, one thing I might, is number one, which is the first one?
Yeah.
I kind of think that, I like, I mean, I like the answer. I might, the question is maybe more directly, not why are we considering putting on the ballot, but what's the problem that we need to address, maybe? Yeah, to be more focused, you know, what problem are we trying to fix? What is the problem that makes us go into all this time and effort and put it on the ballot? What problem is it? I think rather than, this is kind of a neutral.
You bet, we can add that, thank you. So, the next area is public outreach. And again, this was on the timeline, but kind of the main pieces of that program are the website content, the Crier, public relations, social media posts, postcard mailings, community groups, and town hall meeting. So, website content, this is just making sure that we're taking this information and providing easy-to-access, accurate information for residents on the city's website. So that'll be one of the first things that we undertake, is to make sure that that's in place. Obviously, the Crier is a tool that citizens are used to, used to receiving information about the city. So we feel like that's a strong place to have information. Public relations, that's simply meaning press releases for local media that would be covering this, and then possibly interviews, answering questions if they, if they have anything, any questions that they particularly might have. Social media posts, again, citizens have gotten used to learning different aspects of the city and operations through social media, so it's a great tool to be able to get out some of this information. Postcard mailings, there's a plural on there that maybe shouldn't be. Right now, I think we've planned one postcard mailing in the, during this education timeframe. And then, community groups, we're going to talk about a little bit more here in a second. But that is where we would need your help, going out to talk to homeowners associations and other groups here in the city, to, again, walk through some of these key points, answer their questions, direct them to the additional information, like on the city's website, all of those things. And then the town hall meeting is something that, in the original plan, was a point to discuss and wasn't actually scheduled. But my, I think my position on it is, I think we should schedule one town hall meeting here. Even if five people show up, I think it's five more people, we're providing that service. Now, you guys, you got to tell me, I'm not doing the operations here and everything. So, I just think it's a nice additional way that if somebody's not going to their HOA meetings or any other community group, that there is another opportunity for people to learn about this issue before it goes on the ballot. So, I would like to see us have a town hall meeting. But again, that would be something you guys should discuss.
I agree.
I agree.
I think it's crucial. I mean, you can't, you can't not have it. You have to be, you have to be able to say that we had a town hall meeting, invited everybody.
I think, I don't know that we'll get a huge turnout, but I do think we need, I feel like I need to be able to say, "We tried." Right? I mean, a lot of times that falls on deaf ears anyway, but we do have to try.
And some, some parts of the city aren't covered by an HOA, so they-
Good point, that's a very good point.
But, but again, I agree with Katie, you know, we tried and, and there were opportunities, so.
So are there any other elements that you feel like maybe I missed here as far as might be a great way to communicate with residents? Or do you feel like this is pretty comprehensive?
I feel like it's really comprehensive, but I did have one question about the numbers that I would want to make sure I understood fully. When we talk about the 1.2 million, 13%, is that based on what we currently collect? Okay. How much do we think, how much additional do we think we will collect once? Do we have any idea?
We don't, yeah, it's, it's hard to gauge, we don't have an answer for that. When we talk to the SETs, the people with SETs, Munirevs is actually the one who helps them, who helps coordinate that, and they represent a lot of vendors who go through the SET system. So they're just a tax preparation company. They said that they had significant vendors through them that won't remit sales tax to the city until we connect with SETs, but they wouldn't tell us who it is. So it's possible those vendors are already remitting. They, maybe Munirevs just doesn't know that they're remitting. So it's, it's hard to say for sure.
So I imagine that question's going to come up, you know, how much more money are you going to be getting?
A question I would- A question, so this is happening between April and July.
End of July, yes.
And is it appropriate that we, taking our resources, go to current boards and commissions? Because I'm just thinking of the people who are on those, who are their leaders in the community, they have a lot of bandwidth, and if it's appropriate, you know, go hit every single one and, and get on their agenda and do it, do it early on, because those people will talk. And same thing with Citizens Advisory Task Force.
I think he's leading well, right into the next slide.
Yeah.
That's exactly right, Mike, because that's the other thing we want to try and brainstorm.
And I didn't tip him off ahead of time.
I know, that was well done.
Thank you, that was, but no, I think that's a great addition to this because I think during the education phase, it's important to try and get as, in front of as many people as possible. And like you said, those folks are already connected to the city, so they are going to be more active when they're talking out in the community as well, so.
It crossed my mind, staff as well. I mean, sure, the folks in this room know what the story is, but, you know, sometimes other people, it can be asked questions, and to prepare them with the right answers and the right education, probably-
I think the key points will be important for everybody to have.
Yeah.
I agree. So, the first part of the community groups are homeowners associations. These are the 16 that are in the city's database right now.
Is Glenmore HOA not in there?
Laura, you might just talk about what this list is and what it isn't.
Oh, yeah, we may want to leave them out because they're trying to do a $44 million new clubhouse. You may want to leave them off that.
It's on our list.
Yeah, we may, we may have just missed that one. This is the list that we've been maintaining over the years. It's not very current because we only can update the information when somebody notifies us of an update. But this is the list that we have, but yeah, looks like we missed one on there.
We're not trying to, also, that it's exhaustive, that it's every, every HOA that exists.
And that's, so that's part of the discussion, if we should add Glenmore to the list, and then are there any others that you don't see here, that you're aware of, that we should be adding?
Just curious, how often do HOAs meet?
Katie's never meets.
We don't have one, so I don't know.
Once a year.
They're all different.
Once a year, the board meets monthly, but once a year.
Members meet once a year.
There's an all-members' meeting once a year, but they, they have board meetings much more frequently.
And it may come, in some instances, it may be you presenting to their board, and then they're sharing that information through their emails, or newsletters, or whatever.
Huffington on there, did they have? I mean, they, they have some sort of loose HOA.
They do have something.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
But I think, I think you got to present it to the, the boards, because we'll never hit the annual meetings. Those are usually February, January, February.
Yeah.
I know there is an HOA north of Mansfield there, but I don't think it's functional.
And it, it may also be an instance, as we contact them, that they would be willing to at least schedule a special meeting for, around this topic, for folks if they want to come and hear about it.
But you might also, you might also start thinking for yourselves, which one of these you will want to volunteer for?
And, and again, as, that's coming up here in a second too, is talking about kind of the, the structure going forward. Again, I think if, if all of you are willing to help do some of these presentations, obviously, there's 16 here, there's some here on the next page as part of another potential list. These aren't have-tos, but these are ideas. And if there's any other community groups, like the boards and commissions and advisory boards, we can add those. You know, once you see that full list, if there's seven of you, you know, that's three each. If that works, you know, that way, you know, I think it shares some of that time commitment and, and makes it a little bit easier. Are there any other groups, like non-HOA groups, that you think might be good to talk to?
Isn't there a garden club?
We were just talking about that.
Really?
There's a garden club.
And I don't see-
Garden club?
-the community as loosely, the equestrian community, I don't know if there's an official-
There used to be a Cherry Hills Equestrian-
Well, there's the, there's Village Club, which is a lot that needs to be on there. But I don't know if that really represents the, I think that might just be kind of reaching out to the individuals that we know that are always kind of at the forefront.
And if there's any service clubs, anything like that, that we could do those too?
I know some, they're just much broader than Cherry Hills.
And if, if something comes to mind tonight as you're driving home, just go ahead and shoot us an email.
What about retail community? I mean, it, this puts them in the, you know, those, those in Cherry Hills Village on an even footing with internet. Would seem to me that that would be an area that would have a vested interest and would be supportive. So, you know, that may be a place we should add to, a set of constituents that we should add to the list.
I think that's a good idea, and with, you know, there's not a ton of them, so it might be a situation where you can just walk in and talk, talk to the owner or manager.
Residents, though, that most of them can vote.
No, but, but to the extent that, that they're selling, even if it's, you know, Country Club Golf Shop, they're at a disadvantage at this moment, potentially at a disadvantage. And, you know, they would, I think they would welcome. And so, to the extent they're informed, and to the extent that they interact with folks in the community, there might be, you know, a few more eyeballs, a few more ears that we're, we're touching.
Good point, I think that's a great idea.
Kyle, related to this, would you consider giving us a quick training session? So we practice, as, we don't want to go out there and not have a good presentation.
I, the plan is, is to develop a slide presentation that you wouldn't necessarily have to project, but it could be a printout, or it could be spoken, you could speak to it, but yes, absolutely, we could do a, a training session on it. Yep. Okay, thank you. The next thing to talk about is the Campaign Committee. I, I think we talked about this very briefly at the retreat. But from a structure standpoint, my recommendation, I'd love to see two of you as co-chairs of that, or one of you with a, someone from the community that would be interested in being involved and helping with this. So, I don't know if you want to do rock, paper, scissors, or volunteer. But, and you don't have to do it tonight, but just from a start-thinking-about-it standpoint, I think it works better if there's a couple of co-chairs, and the group then even, you know, again, starts to meet regularly. And again, as, especially as these presentations. I use the term Campaign Committee, but there's a, there's a dividing line there from when this goes on the ballot. So, you guys are kind of the Education Committee. If somebody from the community wants to join that, great. The Campaign Committee is kind of, once it goes on the ballot, and it becomes a campaign, which you guys can still advocate for those. And then, again, looking at who we might want to bring in from the community, who you think might be open to being involved in this.
Knowing that, that you might have somebody in mind, but maybe you want to talk with them directly first, before you volunteer their services, again, and I think we're going to run out of time anyway, maybe just, if you don't mind, reaching out to some folks and seeing if you can send us some names, including if you're interested in co-chairing, that would be great.
Yeah.
What, can I just add? Maybe if you're going to be having those conversations, what would you suggest that our council people tell those people their responsibilities will be? Like what the expectations will be? Would that help you guys? Like, here's what we're going to need you to do.
I, I think in the interim, you know, in the early part of this, it's going to be primarily those community presentations. And, you know, again, being out and talking to people. Once the campaign starts, then again, it's going to be, I see this as being a pretty traditional retail politics kind of a, a campaign. The, the community has, I think, 2,200 households. It's almost, it's very possible to get in front of almost every household. So, there might be some walking precincts, community meetings, things like that, that they could be asked to do. Yes, yes. Yep, putting up signs.
We're at 6:29, so we didn't want to start the regular meeting on time. Is there anything last, next step?
The last thing was just the next steps, and that's just, again, we'll revise the key points and FAQs. You start to think about the Campaign Committee members. We'll finalize the community group list. We'll start working on the website content, drafting the first press release, developing a social media calendar, and then working on that community group presentation that I would share with you, like, in a training session. So, that's all. Yep.
All right, is everybody ready to go ahead and go straight into the meeting?
Yes.
All right. At 6:30, I'll call to order the, the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. This is our regular meeting. We need a roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Safavi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon's absent, Counselor Blum?
Here.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a very important item on our agenda, and it's very welcome one, and, and a pleasure to be able to speak to this and present some words and thoughts and thank yous to Mr. Ralph Mason on his retirement. So first of all, we have drafted a proclamation. It's not only suitable for framing, it is framed. And I can read it to you. This proclamation of the City of Cherry Hills Village designates March 15th, 2022, as Ralph Mason Day. Whereas Ralph Mason started working for the City Chair of Cherry Hills Village on July 17th, 1982, and whereas Mr. Mason began as a maintenance worker and heavy equipment operator, was promoted to crew chief in 1997, to street superintendent in 2004, and finally became the city's first project and lottery manager in 2014. And whereas Mr. Mason has received many industry awards and accolades during his career, including selection as the Outstanding Public Works Employee by the Colorado Chapter of the American Public Works Association in 2015, and selection as the Professional Manager of the Year in Administrative Management by the Colorado APWA in 2021. And whereas Mr. Mason always conducts himself with professionalism, efficiency, optimism, courtesy, and enthusiasm, and whereas Mr. Mason embodies and exemplifies the very best professionalism and leadership in the field of public works, and whereas Mr. Mason has maintained an unsurpassed dedication to Cherry Hills Village, and has consistently performed outstanding service to the community, and whereas Mr. Mason has shown understanding and compassion in his interactions with citizens, and routinely placed the needs of the city and department before his own. Now therefore, the City Council of this City of Cherry Hills Village recognizes and honors Ralph Mason for his outstanding public service to Cherry Hills Village, and reclaims March 15th, 2022, as Ralph Mason Day in Cherry, in the City of Cherry Hills Village. And this is signed by all council members and myself. So thank you very much, Ralph. A few more things. We have time for council comments, too. Any councilor, if you can jump in and add in your thoughts.
Ralph, we will miss you. Staff will miss you. The people up here will miss you, and what a great run. And more than anything, you have been a wonderful ambassador for this city. So, thank you.
Ralph, I just can't say how disappointed we are to lose you, but we are happy for you. I feel like there's a lot of that going around these days, but happy for you, but it's, we're sad to be losing you. You know, you've been here with Cherry Hills longer than I've lived here, and I know that I feel a part of this community. I want you to know what an integral part of the community you are. You know, I, I feel like Cherry Hills Village is almost Oz. You're in Kansas, the roads are terrible, they're bumpy, it's almost like a tornado when you're driving down Dahlia, if you're headed north. But when you come back south on Dahlia, it's like you've crossed into Kansas, and there, or into Oz, and there's rainbows and green grass. I don't remember seeing any munchkins, but it's, the difference is so stark. Every time I drive down that street, which is multiple times a day, I am reminded of the job that you have done for this city, the professionalism, the knowledge, the care that goes into everything that you do, and it really does show. And so, we're losing more than just an employee, we're losing a very big part of our community. We wish you the best moving forward.
Ralph, you've made a mark, which is a lot more than a lot of people can say. I mean, you've really had a significant impact on the city, and the city's grateful, and I would say personally, it's always been a pleasure working with you. I've enjoyed it. Good luck.
Ralph, just a quick note, most of the people that I know when they retire, the guys, after about 10 days, it's like, why did I retire? So if that crosses your mind, call us back. But, thank you very much for your service.
That's true.
No, again, I would echo all those thoughts. I've worked with you on a couple of issues, Ralph, and you've been nothing but professional. So, I do want to wish you luck going forward, and as Option said, when you want to come back, let us know.
Okay, I want to add, and where's my former mayor? Mayor Welborn wrote a letter, and I'd like to just read that as well, because he worked with you for a long time. Oh, good, he's got your own copy. Mayor Welborn writes, "Tonight, we are participants in a historic event, the end of an era, the retirement of our valued friend Ralph Mason after 40 years of devoted service to this community. Martha and I will miss Ralph, as will we all. We have so many Ralph memories. Our best ones are of his smiling face at the helm of that old yellow CHV maintainer on South Fairfax Street, plowing a path through a record march blizzard, or grading the road back into shape just in time to keep the paving proponents at bay. Ralph leaves our city in a much better shape than when he found us 40 years ago in 1982. That was my first year on council, and the year that Ralph rode into our lives on his bicycle from somewhere west of Bailey. It was never clear whether he had a car. Rolled up his sleeves and went to work with his patented rice smile and that twinkle in his eye that still gleams today. A CB who came ashore and moved inland, hauling with him his strength of character and his unique ability to make things better. In the years since, he has defined a scope and set a standard for what public works and public service means in this community that will continue to bring us value long after he leaves. Ralph sets a bar high for everyone he deals with, but that is because he sets the bar highest for himself. His personal standard is perhaps best summed up in two words: can do. There isn't anything Ralph won't tackle. There isn't anything he can't operate, maintain, fix, design, build, or if necessary, negotiate. The city is full of the results of his handiwork. An example, the South Birch cul-de-sac. For years, that turnaround was a mess, it didn't drain properly. It was a mud hole in the spring, and after any storm, and deeply rutted and dry, seemingly no amount of grading or gravel could solve the problem. Ralph thought about it for quite a while then, designed to fix, and fixed it almost single-handedly. We watched him. Now it's a model of how to keep a gravel road dry in the middle of a watershed. So Ralph, we wish you the best in your new chapter, back to Antarctica and beyond. Thank you for all you have done for us. We're a better place for your having been such a positive and important part of our community for so long. Jeff and Martha Welborn." And I wanted to add just too, about to everybody in the room, and I think everybody knows this, the reputation that Ralph has throughout the state as the preeminent roadman and knowledgeable. People come to him from all over for advice, and he really is the person, the person that everybody turns to to know, to get to your roads paved. And thank you for the work you did at Beal Mansion. Appreciate that, and people should know how much money he saved us by giving us names of consultants and helping us on issues that were private roads, that weren't city roads, but his expertise saved us, our citizens and residents, a lot of money, and made the roads much better. So, thank you for all you've done, and just wanted to add to that. I think, next, Director Goldie?
Yes, thank you. Ralph, I get to talk about you again. Ralph officially retired, when was it, two weeks, last week? Seems like forever, we don't even remember you anymore. No, hey, hey. So, Ralph's been here 40 years, and we've heard from everybody about his commitment, his professionalism, his dedication, his honesty, his integrity. I want to talk about something, you know, we've heard what he's done for the city. He's shown exceptional loyalty to the organization, as well as to the residents. The problem with public works is the accomplishments that we do are always in flux. We plow snow, it melts, you forgot we were even there. Gravel roads get graded, three months later, we're back out there like we were never there. Streets get paved, they only last so long. So, Ralph has really accomplished a lot, but there's one thing he's really proud of, so I wanted to talk about it tonight. And put, if you could pass those to council for me, something very tangible. And it's our maintenance management system. You've heard about how good our roads are from everybody up here, and what Ralph has really done for us. So, about 16 years ago, when I took over in public works, Ralph came to me, and he's like, you know, we really have to change how we're managing our pavement. He didn't say a bad word about who was before him, he just said, with all the education and experience the city has given me, he says, he told me he could put together a program that would make our streets the best in the state. So... There we go. Oh, one too many. Was that all right? So, my tribute to Ralph tonight's a little non-traditional, but I wanted to highlight this specific program because I know Ralph's so proud of it, and I think it's something that I want to emphasize, and I think this council and other councils beyond this council need to emphasize, what Ralph really has done with our streets, and how he has saved this city millions of dollars, and has produced the highest quality streets. We'll put our program up against anybody's. So, Kappa, which is the Colorado Asphalt Paving Association, it's the premier association in the state. All of the contractors are members, a lot of the cities are members. They are the warehouse for any new technology that comes out, for any new specs that come out. So, they have put together what I handed out to you, and it's a pavement condition index. So, what that is, is it's an old standard that was put together by the Corps of Engineers. It's been mushed around a little bit and changed, so municipalities can use it. So there's a set of standards, and I won't go into those standards, that everybody uses to rate their, their roads. And so, Kappa keeps a tab on that, and as you can see, there's about 93 cities that have participated in the last few years with that. There's a lot more municipalities than that in the city, but those 93 represent about 90% of the municipally-owned asphalt in the state. So, it's pretty much all of the state there. So, in Kappa's report, the first thing you'll see is funding. So, the highest 75th percentile of cities spend $10,000 a lane mile on their roads. And normally, when, if it was education or something similar, you'd say, all right, we're putting a ton of money towards it. Well, you know, we're in the 25th percentile. We spend less than $3,300, so we're even lower than the 25th. For the last two years, we've put $2,444 per lane mile into the city. Over the last 15 years, you've entrusted Ralph with $6 million worth of investment, and a $4,200 average over that same period of time. But what's, what's really amazing about that is where we end up on the pavement condition index, thanks to Ralph's program. We spend the least amount of money in the state. We have an 86, which is second highest in the state, but I would say that's the highest in the state. The City of Sheridan, you'll notice, has a 97. They passed a multimillion-dollar bond and repaved all of their streets to start at that. But because they are not doing the maintenance program that Ralph has put together, they are not going to be able to maintain that height. They, they went in and completely started over. We have not done that. Ralph's program, forward-thinking, multi-year, you know, we had to, with this council and others, people come in complaining about chip seal, but, but council has stood behind the program, said this is what we're going to do, it's the right thing. And so, you know, it's no less than monumental what Ralph has done with this program. We will continue to use this program now that Ralph's gone. But I think, I know Ralph is very proud of what he has done with his 40 years here, because our roads were in the 30s, 40s, and 50s when he started on the pavement condition index. And now, you know, there's only, like I said, Sheridan has a 96 or 7 because they started over. I think there's one other city that has an 86. But look at the amount of money these cities are spending per lane mile, and they're not even coming close to the quality of the road that the residents of Cherry Hills Village have. So, that is the one thing I wanted to talk about, because I know Ralph is so proud of that. So now, it's the great escape. We've got one more thing for Ralph here, but enjoy your retirement, you've earned it.
So, it's your turn to talk, but first, I've got something here from the city mayor. Sweet, it's a bong.
So, we got Ralph a bong, I guess. So, it says, "Ralph Mason, in recognition of your outstanding years of dedication and commitment to the citizens of Cherry Hills Village, 1982 to 2022." Thanks, Ralph.
So where do I start? Where do I end? You know, I'll start with, yeah, I went up and pro bono'd up there, but you're still a resident, and all the people up there are still residents, and we still get your taxes. So, it was, I felt very appropriate going up there and doing measurement for you. And referring Bruce, he's a great guy.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would like to thank all present and past mayors, city council members and residents for competitively employing me in this region. You know, you guys have always took good care of your, your employees, and I appreciate that very much. I, you know, you've, you've always given us the resources that we needed, the tools, the funds, and the manpower to make things happen. And, you know, for a blue collar worker, you can't ask for any more than that, and I appreciate that very much. You know, we go to training seminars and conferences, you guys send us, and if you want to stay on the cutting edge of what's going on in the state, you need to keep sending us. But when we're there, they stick a badge on us, you know, it's a name, your name, and then underneath of it, it'd give, you know, where you work. And you see people looking at the where you work part, and, you know, they see Cherry Hills Village, City of Cherry Hills Village. And I can tell you, without a shadow of a doubt, there's some reverence there. There's a little bit of covenant-ness there. You know, they know when you work here, you work for one of the most affluent cities in the nation, not just in the state. You know, it's a, it's a, you know, it's not an ego thing, anything like that, it's just a matter of, you know, I know they wish they worked for somewhere like a Jackson Hole or Sedona or Telluride or Cherry Hills. And I always took great pride in that. You know, they always ask, you know, first, you know, men, what do you do? And so, you, you tell them what you do, and how long you been there, and you tell them that. And then they ask, you know, what's it like working there? That's when I throw my hands up and say, I spoil people. But, really, that's not true. What I tell them is what I just told you, and that is, they've been fair to work for, they've treated me well. I would have never stayed here 40 years if you hadn't. And you gainfully employed me, you helped me raise a family, pay off a house, and put a nest egg away for retirement. You know, I, I can't go any farther with that without looking back at my wife and telling you that she is, you know, she has carried me through the times here when they were tough, and there's been some tough times here, and it's been her support that has got me out the door in the mornings. And, you know, I'll be forever grateful for that. The next thing is, you know, I'm a man of faith, and, you know, I, I go to my knees every morning, virtually every morning, at minimum, I lower my head, and I ask for the ability to come here and provide the highest level of service that I can for my customers, that's the residents. And, you know, for the wisdom, the strength, and the knowledge to do that. And I really believe that because I've done that, because I've looked that way first instead of here, I've been able to be successful here. And, you know, so I want to give that, that, you know, that accolade to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. With that, you know, I'm going to do the old, you know, beauty queen wave on the float and get out of y'all's hair.
Whoa, wait, don't go too fast. We'd like a picture, can we get a picture? And let's come down there.
Get council up there.
Can I have a picture?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We're standing up, that's slower. There'd be somewhere fun.
Were you going to do us for that?
Yeah, we'd be back there. It's good. Yeah, Ralph is.
Smile, one, two, three. Wonderful, thanks.
Wonderful, thanks.
Shortest thing around.
Do we have any signups, Laura?
Adam Ryder, you approach, and you have the floor.
I just wanted to talk real quick, just, I understand you're gonna talk about, what is it, the, uh, somebody annexing or wanting a little piece of driveway of the city street?
Sure, that's fine. You, you can talk about anything, absolutely. Oh, there's, it's a sec, oh, there's a second reading of this. Right, but you can speak tonight, you're absolutely welcome to.
I just got the letter, so I thought I'd.
You're always welcome to be, there, there will be a first reading of it, which isn't for public hearing, but the public, there will be a public hearing and a chance for additional comment, um, at a future meeting as well. So, but you're, you're here, you might as well, you, you have the floor.
I got the letter, I'm at fifty-five Mead Lane, I just thought it would, uh, made sense when I looked at it. Uh, you have a, a city street, it looks like only one, uh, it goes to one house, one person uses it. I just think that it makes sense, that there's no reason why, if that owner is willing to take on the burdens of ownership, uh, and take care of that, there's no reason why it shouldn't happen. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate, thanks for coming, you, you're welcome anytime. All right, moving on, the agenda, um, consent agenda, item seven, approval of minutes, and also there's another, there's also B, professional service agreement, any motion?
Anybody want to remove anything? I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's done. Um, next item is ten, which is new business, and this will be council bill, uh, seven, series twenty-twenty-two, vacating city's interest in a portion of Crest Road right-of-way, and this is a first reading, Director Goldie.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of council. So, um, before you, uh, first reading is council bill seven, series twenty-twenty-two, vacating the city's interest in a portion of the Crest Road right-of-way. This is the first reading, um, so unless there's any questions, staff will, um, not go into its staff report right now. Um, we are simply asking council to set the hearing date, um, so we can, uh, get this on council agenda and have a public hearing at that time.
I move to approve council bill seven, series two thousand twenty-two, vacating the city's interest in a portion of Crest Road right-of-way located within the city of Cherry Hills Village, Arapahoe County, state of Colorado, on first reading, and set the public hearing and second reading on this matter for April nineteenth, twenty, two thousand twenty-two, city council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion?
Hearing no discussion, take a roll call.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next, we have council bill eight, series twenty-twenty-two, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two by creating a fund for the Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District and appropriating funds therein, this is on first reading. Director Sager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Now that the Southmore Circle Hudson Parkway General Improvement District has been organized, the next step is to create a fund that will track the revenue and expenditures for the GID. Council bill eight, series twenty-twenty-two, will establish the fund and appropriate expenditures in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand sixty-one dollars, which includes Excel's cost for burying the, the utility lines, the reimbursement for RD who put up the initial escrow funds, bond issuance fees, a construction reserve, and the debt service fund. Staff is happy to answer any questions council may have at this time.
Any questions for staff?
I move to approve council bill eight, series two thousand twenty-two, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two by creating a fund for the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District and appropriating funds therein on first reading.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll take a roll call, Laura, please.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes. Um, next up, item ten, C, council bill nine, series twenty-twenty-two, amending article three of chapter two of the municipal code. Uh, this is on first reading, Director Sager.
As city council is aware, the city will be hiring a new finance director and administration in the next few weeks. As part of this process, staff is seeking direction from city council regarding this, the charter's requirement for a fidelity bond. Section thirteen point four of the Home Rule Charter requires any officer or employee that handles city funds shall be required to obtain and file a fidelity bond in any amount to be fixed by city council. Section two dash three dash thirty subsection C of the municipal code further states that the amount of the bond should not, should be not less than twenty thousand dollars, no more than one hundred thousand dollars, as specified by ti, from time to time by city council. Staff could find no instance in which the director of finance and administration, the city manager, or the public works director, who's also the deputy city manager, all authorized signers on the city's various accounts obtained a fidelity, fidelity bond in any amount, nor could staff locate any documentation from city council requiring, requiring or setting an amount for a required bond. There are three proposed options for city council to consider. Option one, city council can approve council bill nine, series two thousand twenty-two on first reading tonight, and then again on second reading at the next council meeting. This option would set the bond amount to zero dollars if the city has approved and purchased insurance coverage that fulfills the same purpose of the fidelity bond in types and coverages. As standard practice, the city purchases additional excess crime coverage from SIRS every year. The policy that was, that was purchased in December twenty twenty-one for two thousand twenty-two was for a limit up to half a million dollars. If city council approves this option, there will be no impact to the two thousand twenty-two budget, as this insurance has already been included in the budget, unless city council would like to purchase a higher amount of excess coverage. Option two, city council can require staff purchase fidelity bonds for the three positions. City council will need to set the required bond amount. There will be an impact to the two thousand twenty-two budget if this option is selected, depending on what the bond amount is, because it was not included in the two thousand twenty-two adopted budget. Fidelity bonds can be pricey and are person-specific, so the benefit of going with insurance over a bond is the insurance covers the city as a whole, not just the three people. So the bond would be for Jay, for me, or for Chris specifically. So if anybody else were to do, let's say, steal money, not that we would, but if we were to.
Things happen.
Things happen. Let's, let's put Laura on the hot seat. If Laura's gonna steal some money, Laura, we would have to go through the city's standard insurance policy to cover that. The bond would not cover that, whereas the excess crime policy would cover Laura's theft. Option three, city council can bring an initiative amending section thirteen point four of the Home Rule Charter to the voters for approval if the desire is to completely remove this requirement or amend the charter to require additional insurance only. Staff is recommending option one for approval tonight. The proposed text changes are on the screen, and I can read it if you'd like, but it's a lot of text, I'm sorry.
I, I'd just like to make one note, that from the semicolon on, provided however, that should also be part of the underlined new language that's been added.
That is correct. We failed to underline that. I failed to underline that in the staff memo. So where it says specified from time to time by city council, semicolon, and then provided however, all of that should be underlined and in red. That's all new language. So with that, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for staff? Counselor Blum?
No.
Counselor Gallagher?
Help, uh, help me understand. There is a, there's employee dishonesty in place, as you described, for city staff, and it's not limited to those three people. That limit of protection runs up, uh, help us understand.
Sure.
At what level does that stop? And then, we know the excess liability kicks in at half a million. Does the underlying, uh, limit of protection go all the way up to half a million?
It goes up to five million. So the city's original plan is up to five million dollars, and then this is just an excess insurance on top of that, that, that sort of satisfies that, that bond amount, which is twenty thousand to a hundred thousand, but is a little bit higher. So that's the way the city's been satisfying that charter amendment.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Brown? I, I, my thoughts about this are, um, I'm inclined to go to the charter and change it, because I think it, from, we got a saying in the law, that bonds are dumb, uh, they're expensive, um, they, um, are just additional coverage, the insurance coverage and fidelity coverage is better, and we can get better coverage there. Um, and I don't know that, it, we have an old, back of the day, in the fifties and sixties, there were bonds, but that's because it was a different world. Um, and there was some concern about who would be good, who'd pay on the bond. Now, if an insurance company, SIRS, that they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay on these things, so that's not gonna be an issue. So, um, I, I, my, you know, this is first reading, I understand, but, and I think this is a good thing to do, but I think, I think there are several things in the charter we might, we need to go to, and this is one. And we, it could be easily done, just by addition, adding language, saying a bond or equivalent, you know, insurance coverage, you know, something like that. Yeah, so.
I was, after, yeah, after we were, after we considered this, um, item, I was gonna suggest, I do think we should move forward with this now, because we have another person, um, coming on board, but I was gonna suggest that we make a note, whether it's this year or, uh, you know, some point in the future, to propose a change to that as well. It does seem antiquated and, you know, it, it's not, it's not critical. If that change doesn't happen, we can still function, but, um, I would, I would probably be in favor of proposing that as well.
Any other thoughts or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve council bill nine, series two thousand twenty-two, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, amending article three of chapter two of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the fidelity bond requirement for employees that handle city funds on first reading.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
All right, that passes as well. We are going to recess at seven oh seven, um, the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council, and move into a meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board. Um, if we could call to order, uh, call that to order, that, that district board to order right now, could we have a roll call of members, please?
Board member Safavi?
Here.
Board member Will?
Happy to be here.
Board member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Board member Gallagher?
Here.
Board member Sheldon is absent. Board member Blum?
Yes.
Oh, we have a quorum present. Um, we have no consent items, but we do have new business, item sixteen. Board bill one, series two thousand twenty-two, providing for the issuance of a general obligation note to finance the cost of certain improvements approved at a district election held on November second, two thousand twenty-one, this is a first reading. Director Sager.
I'm gonna make you sick of me before the end of May. Before you tonight is board bill one, series two thousand twenty-two, which authorizes the issuance of series two thousand twenty-two note of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, along with additional proceeds in the amount of thirty-two thousand sixty-one dollars that will be generated from supplemental interest on this series two thousand twenty-two note. If approved on first and second reading, closing will be held towards the beginning of May, and the project should start at the end of May. The city's bond counsel, Ashley Dennis, from Cootock Rock, and I are both available tonight for any questions you may have. Ashley's in the audience.
Any questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve board bill one, series two thousand twenty-two, on first reading, a bill for an ordinance of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District in the city of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado, providing for the issuance of a general obligation note of such district, series two thousand twenty-two, in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding one hundred fifty thousand dollars, to finance the cost of certain improvements approved at a district election held November second, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah, sorry.
Ratifying actions heretofore taken, authorizing the execution by the district of the note and related documents required in connection therewith, and making determinations as to other matters related in the note. Yes, as soon as I read that, I was like, no, that's not right.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, take a roll call, please.
Board members Safavi?
Yes.
Board member Will?
Yes.
Board member Brown?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Board member Gallagher?
Yes.
Board member Blum?
Yes.
All right, um, we, it is now seven oh, seven-ten, um, we will, if there's, without objection, we'll adjourn the meeting of the board of directors of the Southmore Circle Hudson Parkway Central Improvement District, and reconvene into the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. We're agenda item eighteen, and we have reports. Uh, mayor's report, I'll give a brief one, um, since our last meeting, it's been a couple meetings, um, but more recently, um, we had a call on March thirty-first with Attorney General Weiser, that was with the Metro Mayor's Caucus, that was interesting in the fact that there's a lot of, um, discussion from the mayors and police chiefs who were on that call about crime in Colorado, and the fact that it's up fifty-five percent over ten years, and the fact that Greenwood Village auto thefts are up to a hundred and thirty-five percent. And, uh, thank you for coming. Um, concerns, basically, there's a half hour of mayors and police chiefs talking about how bad things, you know, the, the crime situation in Colorado and the issues, and then a half hour with Attorney General Weiser, who, um, got a lot of pointed questions about, what's going on, what can do, and his, his response was actually, well, Laramore County and, um, Boulder County are doing great. So, uh, it was a really interesting call. Uh, I'm not sure that the mayors were all that satisfied with, um, the Attorney General's answers, but at least, you know, give him credit, he, he stepped up and was, um, was talking about the issues, about what could be done, uh, and what was, what their plans were, and what their initiatives were, um, at the Attorney General's office. Um, April fourth, we had a, um, meeting of the, of the Transportation Committee, the Metro Mayor's Caucus. The issue there is a bill that's, that's being promoted by general, I'm a general, by Governor Polis, uh, to have a free day on RTD, RTD ozone, ozone days to have free RTD. So they're committing twenty million dollars or, or, or something around the state to do that. Um, and then the issues with the mayor, but how do you implement this, and is this a good idea, and when would it happen? RTD wants to do it, they don't, they wanna do it, they wanna have a free day just on Tuesdays, and, and regardless of the ozone, because they don't, they said, they don't have the staff, we don't have the drivers, uh, to do it on ozone days, we can't, we can't be that flexible. The mayors are saying, we don't, um, this is all a great idea, but you better have security, because once you have a free day, you're gonna have issues with security on your lines, and, um, yeah, RTD doesn't have any money for security. And, you know, this also has brought up a much bigger issue with the mayors and the Metro Mayor's Caucus about RTD in general. Dissatisfaction, I mean, I think it's probably universal with RTD and its performance, uh, and, uh, a lot of pointed, um, questions about, we could do it better with, we have the money that RTD has, we could do it, give us the money, and we could do, we could do it better. Uh, and a lot of concern about what, what RTD is doing, and its inability to get drivers, and it's cutting back on lines, doesn't affect us so much, but it certainly affects a lot of our other neighboring municipalities. So, um, that's just on the top of the, that's what's gonna be on top of the burden, that, that committee on transportation will focus probably on RTD throughout the rest of the year, because it is the preeminent issue now for mayors and, and, um, we'll have a, going forward, we're having a Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting tomorrow, um, with, CDOT's going to be there, we'll learn more. Um, Thursday, we're having the code meeting here with, uh, Cherry Hills Village, so, you know, that is an interesting meeting, I like to sit in the back and listen to see what the contractors' issues are, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll try to attend. On Friday, we're having a commissioners, mayors, managers meeting at Inglewood, um, with Chris and the managers and the Rappel County Commissioners. Um, that's also the, and then it, and then there's also a CML, oh, on April twenty-second, we're having a CML board meeting. Uh, finally, I wanted to mention, too, that, um, the CML annual meeting is in Breckenridge this summer. Um, I will be. Um, I will be, I'm up for election again because it's, it's only a two-year thing. I'd like to put, throw my hat in again and, and do another two-year stint. I'm on the board and the budget committee, so I will eat a letter if, unless, without objection, if we could, Chris, I think, wrote the last letter for me, just saying that I have, we need a letter from, saying that we have, I have the support of council for that. Um, and then I probably also, I will throw my hat in to, for an officer position too. We'll see what, what happens about, about that as well. Um, I think the Secretary and the Treasurer position is open, but we'll see. Um, finally, there's an election coming up. The South Metro Fire District is having an election, I think in May. Um, and, and, and we have one resident who's running. It's, it's actually a contested election. I think there's four or five people running for these board positions, or two board positions, so it's kind of unusual. We have one resident, David Heller, who's running. Um, just to throw his name out there, I mean, obviously, if we had a resident who's, who's knowledgeable, and he is very knowledgeable, he's been, he's served on the board before, um, that might be in the interest of our village and to have him serving on that board. He represents, they're, they're like, they're like us. They're elected in the district, or they're, no, they're, they have to be resident of the district, but they're elected throughout the, at large, so it's just like kind of who we are. So he has to, they have to run throughout the entire district, which is big. It's Littleton and goes south, and it's a big, big district now. Anyway, um, that's my report.
If I could just add to that, for anybody who may be watching the meeting, um, I know he reached out to me. Um, I don't know if he has reached out to other council members, but he's clearly making an effort for whatever that may be worth.
And, and it is unpaid position, so, good for him, for doing it.
No report.
Yeah. Well, we're obviously sorry to see Ralph go. It is good to see Ryan Baranzoni back on board. Big shoes to fill, but, uh, he'll do a great job.
Yeah, I had a little bit of a double-take moment when I was walking through the hall a couple weeks ago, and walked past Ralph's office and saw Ryan sitting there and waved to him, and I was like, wait a minute, that's not right. Um, so, yeah, that was kind of funny. I have nothing to report.
Uh, we did get the, um, estimates back from, from the, for the cost of redoing the Bellevue median, and it looks like, uh, they're considerably higher than what we had anticipated. So, um, between limitations on what the city has to spend and the, uh, what the HOA has to spend, I think we're gonna end up having to wait until, um, the contractors are a little hungrier and prices are a little more reasonable. Uh, so, the next, um, we had a retreat, Dr. Cogg Retreat. It was pretty interesting. There were, you know, sort of the things you would expect, improvements to tip program and, and those sorts of things, procedural stuff, but also a lot of time spent on, um, residents, um, you know, city planning and, and what are we going to try to do to improve commuting with, at the same time, uh, relative to where residents live versus where they work? And, and that was a, that was a pretty interesting session. I would say a lot of good thoughts and ideas collected, and they're pulling those together into a, a little more cohesive, uh, approach. Uh, so, that's all I have.
I had several meetings, more not maybe city-related, but state-related. Met with the, three separate meeting with the CU President, with the CEO of the Colorado Biosciences, and then another meeting with the President, the CEO of the Physimen Innovation Center, CU Innovation Center. It's really interesting. Uh, 2021, $2.4 billion of investment money came to Colorado for investment in biotech. Uh, that was, so we are right now number eight in the nation, um, in terms of the amount of funding that went for, um, biotech industry, which is pretty impressive. Um, I think there are quite a bit of discussion, conversation, how can we be number five? How can we be number six? And, uh, those are very exciting conversation, and based on the latest numbers I've seen, there is over a million square foot of shortage of lab in Colorado for people that didn't want to come here, or the people we didn't call out, that we need to go in instead of your company. So, we're in a great position, so, that's all.
City Manager?
I have a few things. The city, uh, we, we received an invitation from, um, the South Metro Chamber of Commerce, regarding the, they're having an awards, uh, let me just make sure I'm.
Hey, see, I attended that.
Oh, you attended that already?
Yes.
Is it in the past? Oh, it's in the past.
It was, uh.
Sorry. So I guess I was just hoping to get a report from the mayor on how that went. No.
It, it actually went very well, and I sat beside Mayor Malay. Uh, we, we sat in the back and, and, and talked and chatted about our issues. It was, you know, it was a terrific, it was a good, good event. It's a Chamber of Commerce event, and, uh, we did talk about, you know, the Chamber of Commerce would like us to be members, but, but look, I said, we don't, we don't have any commerce, right? I mean, it's a little difficult for us to justify, but that, that seemed, but I said, as long as you want to invite me, I'll come to your.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, uh, it, they.
We have not been members in the past.
We have not.
And I think for an understandable reason. Uh, so, I guess I just want to check in and make sure the council's aware that they are still soliciting our.
Yeah, they'd like, they'd like our involvement, and at any time, council, they'll invite us, council members, if you want to go to, they'd love to have us.
Sure. Talk about it. Um, quick update on the two recruitment processes, uh, for senior staff. The police chief process, we had interviews, uh, with three different panels, uh, we had some sergeants who were able to give some tours of the community. I can just tell you that we, you know, sometimes you have a, a process like that, and somebody just really just blows it, and just, you know, you know, within the first couple. We had nobody blow it. I, I, every candidate was solid, was really good. Um, we had three very diverse panels, and I think we got a lot of differing views. It's really caused us to do some additional follow-up that I think we weren't, I certainly hadn't planned or baked into the schedule. So it is gonna probably still be a couple more weeks until we have a selection, but no selection is made yet on the police chief. For the Finance Director, uh, we have done some interviews. I, I think we might have a selection by the end of the week, so, uh, stay tuned for that. Um, I also attended a, a meeting today, uh, for the, uh, process that will forever help , uh, the consultants on the project, the interchange, the proposed interchange at Bellevue and I-25. In essence, they've come up with a new alternative that's attempting to, uh, improve, uh, the, the multimodal concerns that Denver had on Union while at the same time relieving some of the congestion on Bellevue. It's sort of this, uh, split diamond plus, is what they're calling it. So they basically had a meeting today to outline how they're going to evaluate it over the next nine months. So, um, it is the, uh, Continued Consultant Employment Plan, I think. I, I do, I do think, I can tell you that we saw some preliminary concepts. It's not necessarily what they're gonna begin to test. They are not gonna run traffic modeling as a part of this, though, because that's what's really expensive, right, to engage in a lot of the, um, they want to make sure that they get political buy-in first, and I think that's really the purpose of this next nine months, is to see if they can get Denver, Rapid County, and Greenwood Village all rowing the boat in the same direction. So, um, it might end up being more political than technical. I am going to attempt to bring them in again, though, to you for just a status update, not necessarily, you know, for a specific action by council, but just to keep this community in, in, involved in the process.
And this plan has an off, off-ramp at Union for both directions?
No.
No.
Not for both directions, only for South.
Only, South.
I mean, I will just tell you, I am not a traffic engineer, but I've worked with traffic engineers for almost 30 years, and some of it rubs off. It, it would eliminate a lot of the potential cut-through traffic that's attempting to bypass the Hampden Interchange in an effort to go south, because why in the world would you come all the way south by a mile to then turn around and go north? So it could theoretically be an improvement over the split diamond, which would, would, would basically intercept all that traffic at Union, both north and south. So, I, you know, again, I tend to think it, it's an improvement over that, but is as good from a cut-through traffic perspective as the spooey at Bellevue? Probably not, but we'll have to wait and see. We got nine more months, so. The master plan survey closes a week from Friday, so I, if you talk to any folks, please have them submit that, that would be great. Remember, we're not sending this one to every household like we did last time. This is much more targeted, so our target numbers of success will be much lower, but that's okay. Um, I still think we can get some really good feedback. Uh, I will be at the CCCMA, the Colorado City and County Managers Association Conference in Glidwin Springs next week, Wednesday through Friday. Um, and then again in June at the CML Conference. I know, uh, the mayor's going, are any other council members attending that? No? Okay, so we will, we will carry the flag on behalf of the city. So that is the, those are my reports. Commander?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, just real quick, we got some good news to share, that a serial burglar that we've been investigating, going after for about two years, maybe a little bit longer, uh, was on our radar, victimized a few residents here in the city we've gone after. We finally got good news and got the DA's to back us up, and got a conviction on him for 54 years, and I found out yesterday that one of our cases specifically that happened here in Cherry Hills Village, he got an additional 10 for that, so he's got 64 years. We're very thrilled to have this predator after, off the street, so, happy about that one. Thank you.
No report, but just some direction. We received a request from the Metro Mayor's Caucus to give a donation for their Housing Stability Flex Fund. Usually they ask for a specific amount. This year, they left it open-ended. It is something that we have donated to the past two years. We normally pay for it out of a miscellaneous training line item in the budget that, that line item was removed, um, in 20, for 2022, when we were trying to balance the budget. We do have some flexibility in that fund. There's an employee who requested tuition that is no longer with the city, so we can donate if city council would like. I just need to find out.
Yeah, that, and it's 1,500, I think, is what we've done.
They, they didn't say.
Well, I think, I think what they expected is what we've done the year before.
The, uh, we did 1,000 in 2020 and 1,150 in 2021.
We should, we should do something, um, because it's, it's a small amount, but it's a, it's kind of one of the initiatives of the Metro Mayor's Caucus, and the, the other communities give a lot more, they give thousands, so, all this is proportional. So, if everybody's in agreement, and you can, and we can use it from another line item, that sounds terrific, let's do that.
Yeah, it's the same line item.
Oh, same line.
Yeah, we just differentiated a little bit.
Perfect.
Do you want to do what I did last year?
Yeah, let's just do what we did last year.
Okay, thank you.
So just real quick, I, um, passed around a letter from Mile High Flood District. Um, they are asking all the cities that are part of the Highline Collaborative to, um, participate in, uh, a mapping process for the entire Highline. This will be a companion document to what we're doing right now. It's, uh, the, the biggest part about this is gonna be the earth view imagery, so they will have somebody go down the middle of the Highline, so we will get a baseline for that. Um, they'll do a more in-depth study on the vegetation and those type of things than we are having done, but it, it, it doesn't time out that we can just use this for our study, but it will be a great companion, so, um, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but we'll bring forward, uh, a request from council to fund this. We have the funding in the Parks Fund, um, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up in case there were any questions, or you wanted to, uh, go look at, uh, these websites that are linked on this letter to, to see what we're talking about.
Thanks, Jay, for, I, I heard about this, but that's, that's clearly something we want to do, I think, and get in that, all right? Any other, um, city attorney?
I just want to mention that we have Drug Takeback Day on April 30th, I believe it is, and Shred Day on May 21st, coming up.
And Shred Day, and how about the Recycle Day? Are we not?
So, we were in the middle of lockdown when we had to book all of that and make those decisions, so this year it's just gonna be the Shred Day and not the, uh, no recycling of electronics or paints this year.
That's all covered?
No, no.
Yeah, it's piling up.
You probably ought to say something, in the cry, we probably want to make that clear, that this is, you know, that we.
Yeah, it's been.
Yeah, we, we included some alternative places that they can drop off paint, and we still have the curb side as well, which, um, picks up some electronics as well, just not the super big, but there were some other options in the Cryer article that was published in April.
Excellent, good. All right, if there's no other business, without objection, we can be adjourned.
Uh, we have.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, executive session, we, well, that's right, we won't adjourn, so we need a motion and proceed in executive session.
I move to, move into executive session pursuant to section 24-6-402-4B, Colorado Revised Statutes to Receive Legal Advice Concerning Ballot Language to Amend the City's Municipal Code Regarding the Collection of Sales Tax on Certain Sales by Businesses That Are Not Physically Located in the Village, and Upon Conclusion Immediately Adjourning.
Have a motion second. We need a roll call on that.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Will?
Yes.